Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome all of you to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon. You can go to the back of the room to get the materials. Para acceder a traducción, apriete el botón del globo en Zoom o en Deján puede venir al esquina del gimnasio. After opening procedures, the public will have an opportunity. The board has changed public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board forum to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned into staff, they are placed in order when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and alternate between public comment at Deján and one on Zoom. If participating be a Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers permitted. The public will also have an opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after a staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now we're moving to our opening procedures. First, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we're moving to our land acknowledgement. We recognize that we're presently on the lands of the Chuchanio, Muehma, Karken, alone many peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Dr. Hurst, can you please take roll call?
Absolutely, sir. President Gonzalez-Hoy.
Present.
Trustee Clerk Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening to everyone. I'm present.
Trustee Phillips. Trustee Phillips is absent as of this time. Trustee Christian.
Good evening, present.
Student trustee Cypress Sert.
Cypress Sert, present. Good evening.
Good evening. And student trustee Caleb.
Caleb, present.
Sorry about that, Caleb. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now we're moving to a reporter for closed session. We did not have a closed session tonight, so we have nothing to report. So we'll move straight to public comment. Ms. Munoz, do we have public comment tonight?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Mike Peritz.
And if we could put up without timer, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Peritz. If you could press the button that has a little face on it.
Okay.
There you go. You can start whenever you're ready.
So I am Mike Peritz, and I know most of you, and I write to many of you, but you don't write back, so I thought I'd come and see what you look like. I wish I were a little bit closer so I could see responses, nonverbal responses. You know me as a person who was a longtime advocate for Kennedy, but tonight I want to talk about Kennedy and the rebuild of Kennedy in a little different context. I speak really not about Kennedy, but I speak about Kennedy and Richmond and their two middle schools and all the feeder schools because ultimately they are affected by what happens at that final destination spot after their 13 years of education. I think that Kennedy and Richmond have to be rebuilt so that they are the appropriate landing places for these youngsters. We talk about declining enrollment and we're concerned about absenteeism. We're concerned about equity. We're concerned about safety. And all of these things are coming into play in our meaningless words if we don't do our very best about rebuilding these campuses. I know that we're being told, oh, we wish we could do this, and we'll try to do this, and maybe we'll do this, and we hope to do this, but then there's always the money. And I understand. I understand that. I've always lived on a budget. Everybody in my family is a school teacher. We know how to live on a budget, how to have to live on a budget. But I think what I want to say to you is that the only possible solution is what we've already seen. We need to look backwards. You know how Helms has partnered with its city? How Kennedy and the pool, how that partnership has happened? And we could talk about Niestrum and we could talk about the community center at Niestrum. It's absolutely essential that we start building partnerships so that we don't have to say we don't have the money. We have to say these are community schools. We can all do it if we all pitch in and we all do it together. I know that Friday there's a meeting with the Richmond City.
Our next public comment is Jeremiah Rome. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. Hello, my name is Jeremiah Rome and I teach at Helms Middle School. Seventy-four days into our school year, we still have five teaching vacancies. Thankfully, four of those classes are being taught by long-term substitutes who are at least providing consistency, mentorship, and care for our students, but one still has no teacher. This inconsistency is a violation of our students' right to an education and a violation of the trust the community puts into our schools. I have no doubt that many of these same students will be placed in at least one similar class next year. What is a child to think, especially one who already believes the school system and this district specifically doesn't care about them? The fact that this problem is allowed to continue proves them right. I have no idea what the district's plan is and I'm fast losing faith yet to do the right and necessary thing for our students, especially our Black Town students who are more drastically affected by this problem and for whom this problem is an absolute emergency. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening. Tonight I'm addressing you all as Kimberly Chamberlain, grandmother and mother and a community member for West Contra Costa Unified School District. I have been in this district since I was four and a half years old. That makes me in this district for 51 years. I can say this honestly, that I am very dedicated as a mother and a grandmother to the school district. I do everything I can possibly. I don't just address these students as kids that are going to move on. They're my kids in every one of these schools. I'm either an aunt, a nana, a grandma, a mom. I've put three of my own children, my sister, myself, my husband, four of his siblings through these schools. Nieces and nephews. We are continuing. I would like this district to please take that into account as we are going into these budget meetings with the county. All of you are looking at the changes that need to be made to make sure that we continue what we need to focus on, which is the students, the people that are committed to this district, which includes myself and other community members. Please.
Our next, our next public comment is Salon Harrison.
Good evening, board and Superintendent Hurst. And hi, everybody. How y'all doing this evening? I just wanted to say thank you for getting everything straight so we can have a wonderful Kwanzaa event and wanted to make sure the community comes out December 12, 6:00 PM at Deján to come to our Kwanzaa celebration. We're gonna have good, wonderful food and we're gonna be supported. And we also, we wanted to make sure our parents see our good programs that our OASA department has, like Masanikio. And we wanted to talk about one of my recommendations on the LCAP, which is our Black African-American school, which is under title one. And so that we could talk about getting better resources in for our students and also have a good time wrapping the year up. So all of you all that are able, please reach out to OASA office and our SCAL and to attend our event December 12th at 6:00 at Deján. And I also would like to make sure that we come back after our winter break with literacy on our minds for our Black students and all our students, but our Black students in particularly, so that we have some good test scores and some support for parents to help their children with the programs like CISP that you guys have brought in. How do we support our children and how can we help with what you guys are doing? And we're not invited to a lot of the planning meetings that you guys are doing around literacy. And so we want to know so we can also be a part of improving literacy for our children in the district because if we work together, we can get better outcomes. And I'm complete. Thank you.
That completes public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone who made public comment. We're now moving to our agenda review and adoption. If there are no objections, we'll approve the agenda as is. Okay, so adopted. We're gonna move to the approval of the minutes from November 1st. Are there any issues? Trustee Reckler?
Thank you. Two corrections that I'll send in after they are approved. First is B5, the Report Ratification of Closed Session. Jewel is spelled capital J, capital U, capital U, capital L. And then in B3, Action Item, Consideration of Approval of Second Amendment to the Superintendent Employment Agreement. There is, the recording of the vote is missing. And so that vote was motion made by trustee Smith Folds, second by President Gonzalez-Hoy. All other trustees and student trustees were unanimous, but the student trustees are advisory.
Thank you. Any other changes? Okay, without objections, we'll approve the minutes with those two changes. So adopted. Thank you, trustee Reckler. Okay, now we're gonna move to our consent items. Are there, oh, there is one change. We are pulling an item from fundraising activities, which is B5. We are pulling, excuse me one second, both adult school fundraisers. Any items anyone would like to pull? Sorry, we're tabling those items. Anyone have any items to pull? Okay, if there are no objections, we'll approve the consent calendar. Okay, so adopted. Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move to the superintendent communication. Dr. Hurst, pass it to you.
Thank you, sir. Can we bring the presentation up, please? We have a few parts to our presentation. We have our student trustees, trustee Caleb and trustee Cypress Sert. They're gonna start us off. I'm gonna come back and provide an update on where we are with the strategic planning process. Then also, we have our director of Positive School Climate, LaShante Smith, who is here, who's gonna provide an update on social emotional learning. With that, we'll turn it over to our student trustee Caleb and Cypress Sert. Thank you.
Yeah, so on Tuesday, on Monday, we had our second ASC meeting, which was a virtual one, and we basically briefly went through what happened at our first every meeting and introduced some of the new members that weren't able to make it. And we went over obviously what happened at the first meeting, which was called our Blue Sky Thinking, where we discussed all of the topics that they wanted to advocate and put at their voice for and what we were trying to do. And I can go over our four focuses.
So for our focuses of ASC this school year, our students voted for social and academic opportunities, funds and resources, campus security, and satisfying student hunger.
And so we're gonna be trying to focus our best on bringing awareness to these topics to kind of see what changes can actually be made regarding these topics.
Thank you so much to both of you. We can go to the next slide. We wanted to provide an update of where we are on the strategic planning process. And we're gonna walk you through a couple of documents. And the writing will be tiny, but I'll share what's in the document. If we can go to the first one, click on Strategic Plan, Working Draft. So this is a document that you'll have access to, board and to the community as well. If we can enlarge that, that'll be great. Once you go to this document, there's actually bookmarks that will take you to our mission. And we're gonna just have you click on the mission. These are conversations that have taken place since 2021 up to today. So when you go through the document, you can see the conversations that led to this mission statement, the vision, the statement as well. We aspire to be a learner-centered community that follows passion-driven lives. Scroll down a little bit, you'll see our Equity Audit Findings. And I spent a lot of time with principals yesterday just talking to them about how these were derived. Authentic communication or engagement, universal systems, structures, and alignment, and adequate attention to equity, access, and achievement. Just to talk about those briefly, I spent a lot of time talking to principals, sharing with them how we came up with this theme around authentic communication. And it was really around this concept when we did listening tours and listened to students and adults about ineffective communications internally and externally as well. And wanting not to just improve communication, but have authentic communication with all of our stakeholders. We also talked about how the theme around universal systems, structures, and alignment came about, and we talked about during the Equity Analysis, how across many of our departments, we lack systems in place, policies, antiquated policies and structures and making sure we're aligned in a strategic direction. So that's why we have that theme. And then naturally, attention to equity, access, and achievement. One of the findings in the Equity Analysis was around achievement and the gap that exists between student groups. So we spent a lot of time talking about those three findings. And really, those being our focus areas moving forward. And scroll down. I won't read all the graduate profile skills. Go up a little bit, please. But we also are now to the place where we have finalized a product we can bring to the board around graduate profile skills. Scroll down. We also had this activity that we did with adults and with our students, and we asked them to think about a caring adult that had a positive impact or that could have a positive impact and what was those characteristics? And here's what they shared. And I'll read a few of them. Out of caring, active, an adult that actively listens to our students in order to understand and experience. Another one, supports students to learn from moments of challenging conflict. Scroll down. Another bullet about the type of adult we want in West Contra Costa. One who understands cultural needs across communities and able to partner with parents and families across all cultures. Another characteristic of a caring adult that we said is an adult that believes in our students even when they don't believe in themselves. An adult that encourages, pushes students in healthy and developmentally appropriate ways. Also, under problem solver, persistent problem solver, an adult that supports our students' understanding of difficult concepts and development of challenging skills, both academically and socially. And scroll down. And then under guardian of a positive learning environment, we want an adult in West Contra Costa that's able to de-escalate conflict as necessary and appropriate within each person's specific professional role. So we really appreciated this feedback. And again, this is a synthesis of all the conversations from the adults and our students. We also have a theory of action that's been created. And then scroll down a little bit more. We also have our core values that have been created. We have a synthesis of that as well. And let's go out of this document. And back to the presentation. Just click on a tab that presented, yeah. And then let's click on the first one, Strategic Plan Brainstorm. So this is some of the work that we have been doing with staff and principals yesterday as well. So of course, our focus areas are those findings around authentic engagement. And then you can see, when you look over to the columns, we have done some work around next steps or action steps that's gonna lead us to getting closer to authentic engagement. If you can open that link that says other. Yes. So this is an activity and a conversation that we had with principals around authentic engagement and what are the action steps or the things or recommendations that we can do as next steps is gonna take us closer to authentic engagement. So here are some of the thoughts and ideas. And if you could scroll down, one that resonated with some of our staff was regularly acknowledging the work of staff, students, and families who go the extra mile. And then regularly acknowledging the work of all staff. And again, you'll be able to access this document and see what was shared as next steps. And if we can go back. Just scroll down. After authentic engagement. Scroll down. You can see universal and accessible systems. And again, you can go onto the document in the fifth column and you can see what staff, what principals, leaders are saying about next steps that's gonna take us closer to creating universal and accessible systems. And then finally, we have relentless attention to agency, access, and achievement. And again, there's a document, a Google Doc, where you can go in and see what staff and leaders have shared about next steps or action steps that's gonna get us closer to that focus area as well. So just to share with the board, we have all the components of the strategic plan in place now. And we have a team of individuals that's working together to put together a final product that will be brought to the board. But we just wanted to share this brief update on strategic planning process with the board. And with that, we're gonna call up our director of Positive School Climate, LaShante Smith. And the board had asked for an update on social emotional learning. So we have director LaShante Smith coming to provide that update for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, board and Superintendent Hurst. Glad to be here and glad to be able to give you an update on social emotional learning. I do want to preface that my colleague who has been leading our work around social emotional learning, Rachel Porzick, is out sick today, so I will be filling in and doing both parts. So you'll have to hear just me. But we are hoping to spread the love so that you know that SEL in West Contra Costa Unified School District has many faces and not just one voice representing it. Next slide. So when we talk about social emotional learning, it's very important that we all get on the same kind of page with what we are discussing. So social emotional learning is defined as the process through which students are taught key social and emotional skills. And these skills are taught both explicitly, and these skills can be embedded in classroom programs. We know that social emotional learning has a lot of research behind it in regards to how students relate to each other, relate to themselves, and how the relational aspects can help in academics. We know that also social emotional learning brings positive outcomes, again, outside of just mental and behavioral health outcomes, but those academic outcomes, which we hope to see in school. Next slide. So how do we go about social and emotional learning in West Contra Costa? Today, what I'm presenting to you is how we are addressing SEL as a tier-one practice. So remember, tier-one means universal. That means every student has access to it. There are different tiers of social emotional learning, and there's different tiers of mental health support. Again, today, we're talking about tier-one supports. So this would be supports that every student has the access and the opportunity to gain. In West Contra Costa Unified School District, we have curriculum that was purchased centrally to support our schools in the explicit teaching of SEL. We also have standalone programs. So those are the two curricula. Then there's practices that happen every day in the classroom. In West Contra Costa, we have curriculum. We went with two curricula that were Castle-aligned. Castle is a collaborative for social emotional learner, learning. So basically, it's a, it's a group of researchers and educators who have come together and kind of mapped out what SEL should look like nationwide and the skills that our students should learn when they are exposed to curricula or practices. So really, the five components of SEL relates to self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. So by the end of a student's trajectory here, so from K to 12, we want them to be very solid on those skills and we want them to have these skills as they enter adulthood and leave our system. We did choose two curriculum, and how we looked at the curriculum is we really wanted to see the evidence behind it. So not just the research behind curriculum, but was there evidence around implementing the curriculum to fidelity? Did it show any positive outcomes for students? And we wanted to make sure that the curriculum was normed on demographics such as ours. And then we wanted to ensure that the curriculum had a cultural relevancy, some cultural awareness to it. And the last point is that our central cost of our SEL curriculum is $140,000, and that is for the curriculum alone. So just the curriculum. Next slide. Thank you. So in WCCUSD, the two curriculum that we support, and when I say support, that means that we provide training for, that we've done PLCs around, and that when we do walkthroughs and support principals and support teachers in the class and implementation, these are the two that we support. The first is Second Step. A Second Step is a curriculum. You all may have heard, a lot of our schools use it, and many of our schools, this was the first curriculum that they adopted about five years ago. So Second Step is designed for kindergarten through eighth. about five years ago. So second step is designed for kindergarten through eighth grade. Um, and so they have an online component and teachers are able to create classrooms. They're able to implement the the lessons right from their computer. Um, and they're also able to download the lessons and interact with students in that way. The second curriculum that we brought on last year is called Wayfinder. And Wayfinder is also a social emotional um explicit curriculum, but Wayfinder is a curriculum for high school students. Wayfinder has curricula for ninth through 12th grade students, but they also have curriculum for K through 12. We are in the process of purchasing this curriculum for our high schools to continue to use uh an explicit SEL curriculum. So those are the two, second step and Wayfinder. Next slide. So as I said in the beginning, it's very important that we don't just rely on a curriculum to teach social and emotional learning skills. So the other ways that we teach these important skills is through different strategies that are embedded in what teachers do day to day. So these strategies could include a five to one positive ratio, morning meetings, structured check-ins, community building circles and group activities. So essentially any group activity in the classroom that is getting students to talk to them, to each other, to themselves and to really be explicit about talking about their feelings and how they relate to one another and how in turn that can um the relational, the relational piece can um support them. Next slide. So these are just some other considerations as we think about SEL in West Contra Costa. One is just finding continued support and funding for social emotional learning. I know that we have a lot of tough decisions to make related to um our district fiscal situation. But we want to ensure that social emotional learning stays um as an important topic. Cause we know that our students um need this very important skill. And when we support SEL curriculum, what happens is that we're able to then have the central oversight of the implementation. And then this helps us to provide training and support to teachers onsite for implementation. We really want to make sure that we try to get people on the same kind of wavelength, if you will, so that we know what is being taught in the classrooms and so that we can provide that deeper support. The next thing is around the data. So we do have a walkthrough tool that's used to gather qualitative data. So this really looks at how the teacher is implementing the lesson and it's not disciplinary or it's not, you know, uh I got you moment. It's just really to support teachers in building out these skills in students. And we know that it's just as important for adults to learn these skills as it is for teachers to teach these skills. So with SEL, there's a big adult component. You can't teach what you don't know. So it's very important that um our teachers and all of our educators really understand social emotional learning so that it comes out authentic and that students are really able to benefit from it. As far as quantitative data, we're looking again at our California Healthy Kids Survey data, looking at student connectedness to school, student perception of safety and our mental health indicators. And if you all remember at the beginning of the school year, I kind of presented out on what our mental health indicators were across our district. So we do take that seriously. And again, this is a tier one support that everyone would have access to. And the last kind of consideration around SEL is that we do want to de-stigmatize student mental health need. We want students to be able to have these conversations about mental health just as they would about physical health. And we don't want teachers and educators to feel like this is something in addition to academics, but this is just as important as academics. And we know we have the opportunity to change lives. We know we have the opportunity to teach these skills to our young people who come into our classes every day. And so we want to ensure that we're doing this universally so that no student is singled out or we're not just isolating groups of students saying they need mental health support or they need behavioral support. But it's more of a tier one, everyone has access to and everyone uh will will learn these skills and it it benefits us all. So I kind of wanted to walk through what lessons look like. So both curricula, second step and Wayfinder, they start off with a warm-up. They go into a video. There's some type of think, care, share. There's a reflection and a wrap-up. But we're actually going to go um if we can go to slide number 10 and click on the Wayfinder. Link please. Um, two slides. Next one. And one more. There we go. Click Wayfinder. So I just wanted to walk through with you all what students would be exposed to. So if you will, um just kind of pretend or use your imagination and and think about yourself as a student in the classroom. Uh you can be, let's say sixth grade because this is the sixth grade uh module. So as you see, it starts off with a quote and this quote is by Maya Angelou. "I long, as does every other human being, to be at home wherever I find myself." So in the curriculum, there would be um a prompt for the teacher to use in helping students to think about this quote. So the teacher would not have to do the heavy lifting and thinking of what to ask or what to say. There would be suggested phrases or suggested comments that the teacher can um say to the class. Next slide. Then students are, they go through an opening ritual. And that'll look different from class to class because the cool thing about it is that every class decides what their opening ritual will be depending upon uh what the class, what their interests are, what they like. So some opening rituals are just like classroom check-ins. Some are standing up together, doing like some type of classroom clap, dance, whatever it is. But they would always do that same ritual and that's really important because it takes you from that academic side to ground you in social and emotional learning and what you'll be doing for the day. Okay, so we've done our opening ritual. Uh, and so then today's lesson would be about guess the emotion. Again, the educator in front of me, I would be talking to you about emotions. I would be talking to you about why why it's important to identify your emotions, why we need emotions and why it's okay to have emotions and it's okay to have two opposite emotions at the same time. All of it's okay. So right now I can be feeling anxious and happy at the same time and both emotions are okay. Again, there would be um prompts so that the teacher can use those prompts in in supporting the class in going through the lesson. Next slide. So this would be um something that would be shown to the class. So notice that these are emotions. So if we want to connect this back to literacy, we can because now we're getting emotion words and we're getting ways that students can start to name their emotion. And sometimes it's hard for us to name the emotion. So it's really important that we're able to explicitly teach what emotions may look like, what they may feel like, so that students have those identifiers. So I'd be telling you all to look at these emotions and guess what these emotions mean. And I may even ask you, how do you feel about these emotions or give give me times that you've experienced some of these emotions. Next slide. We would go into a debrief. Again, the teacher would have all of the materials to debrief the class. Okay, next slide. Now we'd go through a reflection. So right away, you'd go back to what you just learned. We were just talking about emotions. Now we're going to reflect on those emotions. And we're going to talk to each each other and we're going to share out about how those emotions impact us. Next slide. Okay, next one. So the next one is uh Wayfinder and Second Step breaks it up so that every student is able to participate. So say a student wasn't able to read, right? Or they had a hard time verbalizing themselves and naming emotions. The next part of the slides, you can jump down three slides. It is requiring the student to draw. So they can draw their emotion, they can match their emotion and then they can draw it out and act out their emotion. So these are different ways to get all students engaged again in the common theme of emotions. Next slide. There would be a debrief and wrap-up. And let's go to the end. So at the end, this is something that the educator in front of the class would say. And I'm telling you tonight, Board, that challenging emotions can be uncomfortable and at times overwhelming. And I would say to the class, therefore it's normal so that you don't want to control your, you don't want to avoid your uh emotions, but you want to be able to control your emotions and control how you're feeling um and not shy away from that. And then I would just kind of end with why we would approach these emotions with openness and kindness and why it's important to understand that as we make friends and socialize with others. And we know that emotions don't control us. And then it would end with a closing ritual, which would already be um kind of discussed by the class. So that's just a basic layout of how an SEL curriculum would run. So you're probably thinking, hmm, how long does this take? Well, all of the lessons in Wayfinder are designed to be about 25 minutes. And the research shows that if SEL curriculum is explicitly taught for at least 25 minutes per week, that's where they saw saw the evidence of the positive outcomes. In addition to the scripted lesson, which is what I just did with you all, there are also lesson libraries that are not scripted. But say if a teacher just wants to speak about sadness, they may type into this lesson library sadness and they may get a five-minute lesson on it. So there's ways that you can teach without explicitly following a course and se- uh scope and sequence, but instead just focusing on what you need uh to focus on in your classroom. Okay, back to the presentation. Let me get there too. Oh. There we are. We are at the end and we're at the questions time. Thank you.
And this concludes Superintendent Report. We'll turn it back over to the President.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Smith for being here. Um, okay, Board, now we're going to move to questions. Would anyone like to start with questions tonight? We're going to do three questions each. Uh, Trustee Christian, we'll start with you.
Yes, I thank you for the the presentation. And um and I, the question I have is uh how would this be implemented, you know, for our teachers to be trained on this? How would it, how would they get the training on how to be able to operate this effectively?
Yeah, so we started off the year with SEL training and we do them monthly for the school sites that are using Second Step. For Wayfinder, again, we're still in the process of making payment to Wayfinder. But both curriculum, so Second Step and Wayfinder offer training. So included in our price is training. So they go to the sites and they provide virtual training and then we support through a PLC. And so that PLC is just everyone getting together, talking about what's working, what's not working in ways that we can implement uh the program. I won't say better, but to uh implement the program with better fidelity.
Okay, so this would be like done um every day or?
So the site that implement, it's for the structured lessons, it's one time per week and it's no more than 25 to 30 minutes.
Okay, and then I I think you mentioned the part about safety. Did you mention safety in there somewhere?
Yes, I said that we look at measures of perceptions of safety on our California Healthy Kids Survey data as one of the quantitative pieces to determine if curriculum and explicitly teaching these skills and having the support increases perception of safety on school sites.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Trustee Reckler?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'll start with uh my SEL question, which is I can see how this can be taught in self-contained classrooms or, you know, primary grades or seven and eight if it's contained. What happens in seven to 12 when students are switching classes? How is curriculum implemented?
That's a wonderful question. So last year was one of the first years that our high schools and some of our middle schools had advisory classes. So the curriculum was taught in advisory. If there was not an advisory, let me back up, usually takes place at least once a week. So there was that once a week. A lot of time that curriculum could be explicitly taught. Outside of that, the school site would vote on kind of what class would teach the curriculum. And from the school sites that we supported last year, it was on a rotating schedule. So for like six weeks, maybe English period one is using 25 minutes a week to do it. The next week it shifts to another uh class time, another teacher uh doing it for the structured 25 minutes. In addition to that, at the high school levels, we were encouraging everyone just to take part in those opening rituals with their classrooms. And so those are about like five to six minute lessons. And those were done throughout the day, but the structured curriculum was like kind of voted on by the school side of what period we're going to do it and what our scope and sequence would would look like for the year.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next question is for Dr. Hurst and perhaps the agenda setting team. The first one, the first one is in the equity audit audit contract, we were supposed to get a report, not just PowerPoints, but we were supposed to get a written report. Does that written report exist and can the board get that? That's number one. And then number two is what's your plan to engage the board? Is there going to be a like discussion session for the board or is it just coming for a vote?
Thank you. So for um the plan, I was going to meet with the uh President and have that conversation with him during the agenda setting. I had an initial conversation just about timeline with him. Um, but the plan is to ask the President for a special session or a special meeting so that we can have a conversation and bring all parties who've been involved in this process, just so we can go through piece by piece. It's a lot to digest and it can't be done in just a board meeting like this. As far as the written plan, I believe there is a written plan, so I'm going to go back to that agency and get that and send that to the board.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Hurst and Ms. Smith. Thank you so much. Okay, now we're going to move to our first action item, which is the one provisional internship permits. Dr. Johnson, I'll pass to you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, um, excuse me, President Gonzalez and Board. Um, the provisional internship permit allows our district to fill vacancies with teachers enrolled in our internship program.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment for this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I move the provisional internship permit, the PIP.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to a vote. We'll start with Trustee Calip.
Calip, yes.
Trustee Cypress, sir?
Cypress, sir, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips? And I'm a yes as well, pass unanimously. Thank you. And then we can move to our second action item, which is uh the variable term waivers. Dr. Johnson, pass back to you.
Yes, thank you. The variable, the variable term waiver allows our district to assign teachers based on appropriate qualifications from their transcripts.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, do we have any questions? Okay, good. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion?
I move educational code four, four, two, five, eight dot three variable term waivers.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. Trustee uh Calip, we'll start with you.
Calip, yes.
Trustee Cypress, sir?
Cypress, sir, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips? And I'm a yes as well, pass unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Now we're going to move to our only discussion item. Uh, which is uh the work our budget contract subcommittee did. Um, I'm going to pass it to Clerk Smith Folds, who chaired the committee, and then Ms. Moses, it has a presentation. Clerk Smith Folds, you can introduce the item.
Thank you, everyone. Um. We had a budget subcommittee thanks to the President who saw the need to make sure that when we're talking about the budget, that we're talking openly and transparently. So with that being said, the President of the Board, along with myself and Dr. Hurst, got together with all of our labor partners and with this got together with all of our labor partners and with district personnel, and we went through the four thousands and the five thousands. We went through each one of them looking for um items that we can cut or move to another, a later date, have a discussion about. It was a really transparent um, a transparent act. Uh, we had about thirteen or twelve meetings, but twelve meetings and all labor partners are represented at most of those meetings. And our uh new C B O walked us through a lot of the next steps and what it's gonna look like. So I really wanna thank everybody. I wanna thank everybody who attended, thank those, if it's on video, you can go back and watch them. And thanks to the hard work, we did find some savings. So um we met that preliminary goal almost. We did not meet the um extraordinary goal of like twenty million, but we met that preliminary goal of about four point five, right at four point five million. So we did um, we did the job that was put in front of us. Now we have to continue to move uh together and continue to that long journey to March, continuing the transparency and continuing the openness and continue working together. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Ms. Moses, pass it to you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. For President Gonzalez Hoi, Clerk Smith Folds, trustees and Dr. Hurst, I wanted to share with you some additional information um related to the budget subcommittee that was chaired uh by Clerk Smith Folds and President Gonzalez Hoi. Um, so I'd like to share with you some of the um work of the committee and the outcomes that the committee was able to achieve. Next slide. So this budget subcommittee was created in the spring of twenty twenty three to address and inform the fiscal solvency plan that we needed to uh implement in order to ensure that our budget met the county requirements. The subcommittee's goal was to identify non-essential contracts, what Clerk Smith Folds referred to as the four thousands and three thousands, which are the categories that we pay, our materials and supplies and our contracts, uh as well as some other non-direct services. So that this committee was very diligent and line by line, contract by contract, looking at expenditures in order to try and satisfy the requirement uh of our upcoming fiscal reduction list. Next slide. So this work started in the spring of twenty twenty three. Of course, uh at that, when the school year ended, we took a summer break. The work reconvened in October of twenty twenty three. And in October, we reviewed contracts from the current school year that have been submitted uh for work within our district. We were able to uh look at those extensively and the committee, which was comprised of the board members, the cabinet and labor, were able to um evaluate expenditures, decide on whether the expenditure was essential to the learning of our students or the progress of our schools, and then uh make some really tough decisions on um what we would reduce uh in order to comply with the fiscal solvency plan and still retain services to students in a a meaningful way. So this was done uh democratically. There were votes from every labor union and votes from the trustees and a vote from the superintendent. The cabinet was there to just inform and answer questions regarding expenditures, but they had full participation as well. Next slide. So this slide just demonstrates the number of meetings we had and who was represented at the table. Altogether, we had thirty one hours of meetings and every minute counted. Um, everyone was engaged in the work, uh interested in what it is that we were trying to do and diligently worked together to achieve the goals. Next slide. So I'd just like to review, now that we've talked about the committee, why the committee was necessary. Um, I'd like to share with you our budget information and where we are currently and how we got to this place. So in June of twenty twenty three, we adopted our current multi-year budget. Um, it was adopted by the board with a fiscal solvency plan due to identified structural deficit in the out years by our County Office of Education and our business services team. In September twentieth, the county office issued an approval letter for our budget and also for our L cap plan, allowing us to move forward with their approval for our plans to address the structural deficit. On September twenty sixth, we received a further communication from the county identifying that we were still a concern. Uh, that this type of letter really is issued to school districts if the county is um fearing that uh there may be a risk of insolvency. Uh, in these slides, I have copied the leg- language from the letter of the county. Um, and to sum this up for you, uh, the county office um believes that our district is at risk of insolvency and may be unable to meet its financial obligation without changes to our expenditures in the near future. Next slide. So how did we get to this place? Um, this is not new. This is something that our district has been trying to address for many years. Um, in twenty nineteen, twenty, our district began an implementation plan for fiscal solvency. And in that year, we needed to identify twenty four million in reductions. Uh, we were successful in identifying eight million dollars in reductions with the um with the intention to identify an additional sixteen million in the subsequent school year. However, then the COVID nineteen pandemic struck. This pandemic shifted our district priorities. And it provided also some temporary relief with um CARES Act funding to support our schools as we recovered our programs, our students and families and community from this pandemic. Altogether, our district received one hundred thirty nine million dollars in COVID nineteen resources that needed to be spent between March twenty twenty and September twenty twenty four. These one-time resources allowed us to operate without any budgetary reductions in the previous years. But these are now expiring and we will need to make reductions because there will not be money. Uh, there is no money to move those expenses over to our operating fund. So this has um expedited our need to implement a plan. And unfortunately, in the first year, um those cuts are deep. Next slide. This slide demonstrates the fiscal solvency plan that was adopted in June with our multi-year budget. Um, what we see here is the total revenues and expenditures of the district. And this is our combined revenues. It includes our unrestricted operating budget as well as our restricted budget, which includes um many grant funding sources like the ones that are expiring um in June or in September. So we did not anticipate any cuts for this current fiscal year. Um, however, we did identify that during this year, we would need to create a plan to ensure that the reductions um were effectively um identified and carried out so that we can address the structural deficit. This chart shows that we're needing to identify right now nineteen point seven million dollars for reductions to our twenty four, twenty five school year budget. And the plan also calls for further cuts in the twenty five, twenty six school year for a total of nine point four million. The reductions have been itemized um in a non-salary and salary reductions. So if you look at the chart there, um in this current school year, we are trying to identify fifteen point one million approximately uh in staffing reductions and also four point six million approximately in non-salary reductions. The work of this committee really uh got us very close to those non-salary reductions, meaning that we will not have any uh additional impact to um labor or our F T Es with the, looking at the overall number. Next slide. So what are our action steps to make to accomplish this so that we can address this fis- fiscal deficit? Uh, first thing, we're going to identify these potential reductions and uh create an itemized list that we will submit to the Board of Education. And in turn, the Board of Education will need to submit that list to the County Office by December fifteenth. After that time, uh we may receive feedback from the county, but the county would like for us to take further action or would like for our board to take further action by January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four to formally accept this reduction list as uh an indication that it does intend to see through the fiscal solvency plan. Once that is done, uh community, labor and staff will work together to review the proposed reductions and evaluate the district impact for those proposals and make necessary adjustments to um recapture as much as possible uh within that reduction list where where we see fit. The final action would be for the nineteen point seven million dollars in reductions to be formally enacted upon on March fifteenth through the uh processes for F T E reductions. Next slide. So how is our business services team supporting this effort? Um, first, I want to say that um as your interim C B O, I am extremely focused on ensuring that we have all of the data, all of the information necessary to make informed decisions. These are gonna be very difficult times ahead and we know that together we can do this as a community, for our children, for our schools. So I thank you for trusting me to be at the helm of that. So along with our team, um we are currently looking at the data. And we're trying to align with that reduction target that was adopted in the June twenty twenty three multi-year projections. Uh, we're in the process of completing the first interim report. We look forward to presenting a full report on the first interim next at next Wednesday's school board meeting. It is at that time that everyone will have a clearer picture of our exact financial position in the moment. I will say that there have been some shifts and changes since the June adoption and I look forward to sharing those with you in depth and transparently. Because what we've been doing over the last uh month in business services is examining the quarter one expenses to determine uh exactly where we are in terms of what we are projected to spend and what we are projected to take in so that we can ensure that our current budget meets our current needs and is an accurate picture of our financial health as a district. Based upon the analysis of our current first interim um report, we do anticipate the need to have that nineteen point seven million dollars in reductions realized. We are fully committed to working diligently to make sure that this is happening collaboratively and with the support of all personnel. Next slide. Now I'd like to share with you the work that's been done by the budget subcommittee. Um, this committee worked really hard to identify areas in which reductions would be possible. This slide shows a chart of exactly um what the committee agreed is a reduction that we will make in the twenty four, twenty five school year, should the board take action to do so. There are nineteen specific contracts that um were voted to uh either replace or reduce or eliminate, totaling one point seven million dollars. The committee looked at our professional development contracts budget and determined that we could reduce that by about twenty percent, saving the district three hundred forty thousand dollars um in that budgetary line item. We look to freeze out of state travel to ensure that our educators still have access to great professional development, but professional development that would be within our budget. So we're looking to decrease the amount that we spend on uh conference travel, but also eliminate any conference travel that is outside of the state if we can help it. We're looking to reduce utility costs. Uh, our our analysis, uh, one of the things we realized in our analysis is uh this past summer, we had lots of campuses opened and we think we can achieve great programs for kids with less campuses, which means that we would have a great savings in our utility bills uh over the summer. We estimate that to be about three hundred thousand dollars if we just collaborate a few um, collaborate with a few of the schools to share their programs together. We're looking at a ten percent reduction in department budgets. We're also looking to ensure that our um maintenance accounts are within their budget so that we're prioritizing the um the emergency repairs that need to be taken care of and um see if if it can be avoided, uh putting off repairs that are wanted and not necessarily in urgent need. We evaluated our athletics budget to look for some savings there. Um, it was decided and rightfully so by the committee that our athletics department is is extremely important and we do not wanna touch those services for students. However, there was one service for um video, video streaming that we thought we could uh eliminate for about fifty thousand dollars. We're looking to reduce the cost of our print shop by asking sites to pay their uh fair share at cost. We anticipate that to be about ninety thousand. Uh, we have decided as a district that we are gonna retain all funds that were previously used to pay staff um at the department level during our sponsored events and meetings, and that will be a savings of about thirty thousand dollars. And finally, um we, our software license budget has increased exponentially um at the district level as well as sites are investing in their own software. So we felt like we could reduce those license fees by thirty percent by working together with sites to ensure that we're not duplicating services. So altogether, that committee identified four point three million dollars in reduction um through their hard work. Next slide. So what are our next steps? Um, we will continue to use the data that's been collected um from business services, from human resources, and we'll continue the discussions with labor and staff as well as the executive cabinet and the community to develop multiple scenarios to satisfy this uh this ask of this reduction list to the county office. The scenarios will be presented to the school board. And during next week's school board presentation, separate from the first interim, we will also present um the reduction list um on that agenda as well. So we look forward to presenting those items to you uh next Wednesday. And uh that concludes my presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. Do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Board, uh, does anyone have any questions or who would like to get started? Trustee Christian, we'll start with you. Uh, she was, Trustee Reckler, we'll start with you then.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Um, hang with me just one second here. Okay, so for all the reductions that listed, that's listed on page eleven totaling four point three million, when, what's the start date of this? Is this already kicked off?
No, these are reductions that will take place in the twenty four, twenty five school year. So we're identifying now and taking the necessary steps to ensure that next year we can make these reductions in those budgets.
Okay, so that's twenty four, twenty five. Okay. Um, is any, this must all be in spreadsheets, so can we get a link to, you know, all of these line, well, not like out-of-state conferences, but I'm curious on what the software licenses are that are gonna be eliminated. So it, can that be available and uh to the board and to the public?
Um, I can make additional information available, um but um using software as an example, we really looked at the budget and not necessarily the expenditures. What we noticed is that um three years ago, we were spending about a million centrally on software licensing. And currently, that has tripled to about three million. Um, when we combed through those licenses to find out what we are paying for, we found that there were lots of duplicates. Some sites are paying for their own things. So what we plan to do in the case of software licensing is di- dive deeper into the data to see what will be cut, and we estimate we'll be able to cut about thirty percent. So those haven't been identified just yet, but we'll be getting, we'll be beginning to do that. We can have that for you by the March, I'd say by February.
Okay, then to rephrase, when these get solidified, like the nineteen contracts, I think it's important for people to know what they are, is what I'm trying to get at. So that doesn't just disappear and nobody gets to notice on on that. Um, I also have a technical question on R R M A, evaluate contributions in excess of eighty one fifty. Is that dollars or what, what's that?
I'm sorry, which slide are you on?
Uh, once again, I'm on page eleven. And the R R M A line, emergency repairs only, it says evaluate contributions in excess of eighty one fifty. I don't know what eighty one fifty is. Is that eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars or is that, what is that?
Thank you for the question. Actually, eighty one fifty is the object code. There's a typo there. Um, we're evaluating object code eighty one fifty for contributions in excess. Um, what that means is that we're required to set aside three we're required to set aside three percent of our expenditures every year for RMA. But what we've been doing is exceeding that budget. And this year, we exceeded it quite a bit, so we're looking to reduce the excess expense to that budget. So we're trying to, instead of needing an additional contribution to eighty-one fifty, we're trying to tighten a little tighten our schedule so that we can reduce some of that additional monies outside of the three percent.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of comments. When, when you're ready.
Thank you. We'll do the questions from it else, and then we'll do a round of comments. Trusty Christian, we'll go to you.
Yes, I thank you for the presentation. And just kind of go back over a few things. The COVID funds, you said that's running out. How many areas, I mean positions that were created in the COVID funds?
So we've been spending the COVID fund since twenty twenty. I didn't do a deep dive into what's happening, what's happened in previous years. I can only speak to what's in the current budget. This year in our operating, I'm sorry, in our current adopted budget, we have twelve million dollars in ESER, that is salaries that should for all intents and purposes be in our operating budget. So I would estimate that amount to be about twelve million based upon the adopted budget.
Okay, so basically a lot of positions was created in that, right? Another question, when are we going to let the community know about all of this?
Well, one of the ways in which we're informing the community is, are these board meetings. I think that once we get this initial reduction list approved and accepted, then the work of sharing the proposed cuts and speaking with community and other stakeholders to find out what their, what their interests are and what their feedback is on what we're proposing, and then there will be adjustments. So I anticipate that there will be community meetings throughout the month of January and possibly the first half of February to gather that input from community. We have discussed creating that space for community, but we have not yet agendized or calendared those meetings, but they will happen.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Okay, let's move to comments. If we could put up three minute timer. Ms. Moses, thank you so much. Trusty Reckler, you said you had comments. Would you like to start?
Yeah, thank you. So thank you for the presentation. My first ask is, this was, this presentation wasn't attached to when the agenda was published, and I'm fine with that. I understand. But what I would love is that when it goes up, if there could just be a one sentence email that says that the presentation is attached, because I didn't ask any questions about this, because I look at this stuff on Sunday night and I don't really come back to it, and then voila, there it is. So that would, that would be helpful. Second is on page eleven. I, I think it's very important, following up on what trustee Christian said, is that this page is transparent. It's transparent to the board and it's transparent to the community. So, you know, when those software licenses are finalized, and I'm sure there are lots of duplicates, and you can just go through the SPSAs and see, you know, what's out there and what people are buying, but I think it's really important that they know. And that there's a transition plan and you know, transparency and a good step down of what's disappearing. And, yeah, I mean, your board meetings are not, you know, you get a small segment, you get a important but small segment of the population, community shareholders, but there's a lot more people that are really going to feel this. And being through this about half a dozen times, you know, things just disappear and people don't know. So the more early and often is my advice as to what's disappearing. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Christian?
Yes. You know, just reflecting on all of this. You know, time is running out. And December be over, we'll be in January, February will be, looking at February, be up there in March. You know, this is a big urgency, the matter of the life of our district of, you know, making sure that we do the right thing on a lot of things that we about to do. And hopefully that we look at all areas from top. Every area all the way around that we made sure that, you know, if we, you know, we got to make all these cuts, well, it starts with, you know, with everybody. And then you're looking at you know, I just reflect back on the, on the days when I was just an employee under Dr. Harder, you know, they did fellow days, they did a lot of different things to offset the cost, I mean, the, the, to help the district, you know, survive and continue to flourish. To me, it seemed like everything, like a late start, you know, but if we don't stay, you know, stay on making sure that this information is being transparent to everybody out here in the community, so they will understand what's going on. And another thing is this, is that we haven't even worked with our entities of our communities, our cities. And, you know, we got Chevron's right here in our backyard. We got a lot of different people. Man, and, but we have made no connection. You know, I know we doing the tour with the cities on, on October the eighth, but we should have done that a while back. It's just a lot, you know, and, and it's just, just urgency. They're really urgency or everything that, you know, about this. So I don't take this lightly. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Phillips?
Thank you very much. First, to Dr. Hurst and Dr. Moses. It's Dr. Moses, right? Almost Dr. Moses. Almost Dr. Moses. I'm gonna give it to you, Dr. Moses. Well, I'm not giving you anything, you're earning it. So, Dr. Moses, to both of you, thank you for this presentation. This issue, as Dr. Moses said, is years in the making. But this didn't have to be an emergency. This is an emergency because multiple boards and multiple cabinets have set on this thing. And kicked the can year after year after year. Nobody maybe I was, but nobody else was on this dais the last time this thing really kicked off. And I'm saying the last time because there's been generational iterations of this problem. But this did not have to be an emergency. It's an emergency because it was allowed to fester. And it was allowed to fester because when, and I'm saying boards because I mean literally multiple boards. I consider a board to change over every two years. That it's a new version of the board. So I'm including this board, but I'm including multiple boards going back into the past. They have continuously kicked the can because even though people know that things that are being done are unsustainable, they're allowed to continue because people cannot say no to their constituencies. That's why we're in the issue that we're in. So I hope that we learn from our mistakes and this time get on top of it. But don't wait when the next time this stuff comes up, because these are cyclical, budget stuff is cyclical. The next time it comes up that we don't wait till the absolute last minute to do something because we're going to be taking over.
Thank you. Clark Smith-Holtz?
CBO Moses, thank you so much for the presentation. President Gonzalez Hoya, thank you for being part of the committee. Dr. Hurst, thank you for being part of the committee. I think that we have to be careful with revisionist history. I think we have to take our time and understand how we got here, and CBO Moses, you did an excellent job showing us how we got here. But we need to be clear that it was CBOs prior to the one that we have now. We can only go with the information that we're given. That's how the board works. We're given information, and then we make our decision based on that information. That's step one. Step two is we have to make sure that we're serving our community. And the way that we serve our community is we go very open and transparent, which is what this board did when they had the budget subcommittee. It was wide open. Everybody could attend, everybody could listen in, everybody could join. We had to make sure that we opened up those books because we wanted to regain the trust of not only labor partners, but of the committee, or the community itself. So that's what we did, and we said before we start cutting anyone, we are going to start from the top and work our way down. We're going to look at the four thousands and the five thousands, and we're going to see what doesn't touch these kids and what we can cut, move away, put aside, or what have you, right? And CBO Moses was right, it was a very democratic process. So we all went together. We got to this point where we are right now together. And we will continue to move with our labor partners, with the community, with district staff and with board members together, but it requires that continuing, that continuous transparency and openness and doing it the right way. We can't move in chaos. We had to slow down and go back to go forward. And I think that's something that we should all be proud of as a district that we stopped, we evaluated, and we said, this is what we're going to do first. So whatever comes, we know that we came together. I am complete, and thank you for the hard work, and we still have many, many, many more conversations to go.
Thank you. For my comments, Ms. Moses, I also want to thank you and Dr. Hurst. I also want to thank Cabinet because those twelve meetings that we spent together, plus the ones in this last spring. I know it took a lot of your work away to do this work, so I'm thankful that we got through it. I want to thank our labor partners. And I'm Miss Chamberlain's in the audience tonight, but all of our other labor partners as well for participating in those meetings. We had some tough conversations because every dollar that we have in the four and the five thousands contracts, consults, and all this is being used for a reason. So we had to really choose about what is our priority. Is our priority site funding is our priority, a teacher, is priority a classified member, or is our priority this contract? What we learned, what I learned through this process, though, is that we do have some systemic problems that have been inherited, but also come from the lack the state and really from the federal government, including that the lack of teachers and the lack of classified members is really hurting us. Right? We're spending millions of dollars and having to contract out of power professionals because we can't find them. Right? So we have two hundred openings of power professionals, and because of that, we can't just tell students, sorry, you won't get an aide. Right? So we're paying a nine million dollar contract, right, to provide us power professionals or aides and that support. So that's just one example of the many that we encountered in that committee where we had to make a decision that we keep this contract or that we cut it, but what is the effect that will have in a year, right, for our students and for our schools? So we had really tough conversations, and I wish we could have cut more. But the reality is that we're just facing these facts that are affecting us. So I just want to thank the committee. I want to say that we were really transparent. I think Ms. Moses, I want to thank you because you are probably the most transparent CBO I've ever met. In my day work, I work with ten. So, so I want to just thank you for that because I think that it gave me and, and another layer of understanding of the work. But I hope that people are able to see that because without transparency, we're not going to be able to go through the work to March. I, I agree with our trustees, we should attach them, but I think that if anyone goes to our budget meeting agendas, they'll be able to see all the contracts that we're cutting and all the contracts that we didn't cut for transparency. And one of the reasons why I asked that this got agendas tonight is because the conversation we're having next week is going to be a lot longer. It's going to have an updated budget. But we're also receiving where we are on the FTE cuts for transparency, right? I think it was trustee Phillips who had mentioned it last year or a few months ago. He wanted to see in December, and I agree that we have to do that now so that those conversations happen in the next three months to see whether that changes or not. But I want to say thank you to everyone who participated. That's it for my comments. Okay, we're gonna, oh, very quickly, if everyone doesn't mind, I want to thank our chair, Clark Smith-Holtz, because she spent even more countless hours preparing us for this committee meeting. So thank you for your leadership. Okay, we're now going to, oh, that was our last item, so we're gonna now move to comments from the board. We can put a three minute timer again. Oh, sorry, sir, trustees, do you have a comment from the last item? Okay, would anyone like to start with comments? Does anyone have comments? Trusty Phillips, we'll start with you, and I'll just actually head this way.
Thank you. President Gonzalez Hoya, I want to start by saying that I want to acknowledge the comments that you just made on this last item. The, the reason that I want to acknowledge those comments is because the budget and budget shortfalls, not just in this district, but in public education, it really is a complex issue. And you really can't talk about it in three minutes. And so you know, you kind of focus on what you want to focus, then your time is up. But you did say something very important about structural issues that don't have anything really to do with us. So you talked about us having to contract out for certain positions because and I don't think I heard you say this, but some of those services that, you know, and I'm adding to what you said, some of those services the kids are actually legally entitled to. Right? So you can't literally just say I'm not going to do it because we have to pay this additional money. Right? So there are systems. The system is not functioning the way it should function. And then in addition, right, you have, and we had this conversation once before. I, before I start, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, all of our students are not equally important, but we are supplementing the special education budget, budget. Right? And so that's another great example about how you're kind of move, you have to move money around to, to kind of do what you should be doing or what you're legally required to do. But then because you're moving stuff around and stuff is being spread so thin, you, you never really get the full impact of, in my opinion, anyway, of, of the funding sources or what's supposed to happen. So when I make comments about boards or administrations, I ain't talking about you, Dr. Moses, you just became a CBO, okay? But when I make comments like that, what I'm really talking about is the board, the executive cabinet, and then the governance team, the board and the superintendent, actually taking control of the things that it can control. Because like the things that you just talked about around the budget, we, we really can't control that. And so it's something that we and other school districts just kind of have to live with and make, do the best we can. But the things that we can control, right, and this is for future boards when I'm not even here, the things that we can control, we have to control those things as hard and as difficult as those conversations may be, because when we don't control those things, we get to the point where we are, and then we start doing things out of desperation. But if we do things earlier, even though it may piss people off, I honestly don't think the impact will be as hard. Because at the end, it's all kind of right there in your face. So three minutes, can't really say much more. All right. But thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, pass to you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. The first one is that we were supposed to have a governance subcommittee or board policy committee that has yet to materialize. And so I'm not waiting anymore and I'm just sending my stuff in. And so that's going to be coming and agenda sitting team. I'm writing my own rewrite since we're not able to get a committee together. That's first. Second is that we had the California School Boards Association Conference this week, which was good. I would like to encourage us to have a session on workforce housing. AB 2295, which begins January 1, 2024 through January 1, 2033 is a window where a number of laws, rules and regulations have been loosened up so that there's the possibility for school districts to take land and turn it into workforce housing. We don't have to wait for a 711 committee to do any of this. So we're waived out of the 711 committee, which is why I think it's so interesting. I am also highly skeptical, though, because we're talking about building affordability, affordable housing. This is going to be a finance question and you're going to have to find a this cracks me up benevolent developer. Looks like what kind of an oxymoron is that? But this thing is really going to hinge on financing and how you can finance this. But we don't need to wait and it's going to take so long for us to get there. I mean, we're still waiting for a 711 committee forum that I think we should start talking about this now. But the presentation needs to be very heavy on financing. And I have a couple of people that I think could help us with that. And so I'll send that in as well, just for a preliminary conversation. And with that, I am complete. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Christian?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to everyone who gave presentation this evening. And just basically just to say, you know, we we got a lot to do and holiday season's upon us. Be at New Year's in a minute and then we'll be looking at January. So but I just want to say to everyone, you know, man, it's so much. But I just want to say that we keep focusing, that we do the job and make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Smith-Holtz, do you have comments?
I just want to tell you, thank you for your board leadership. Thank you for really setting us on a path of transparency. Thank you for bringing the community back into the board meetings. Thank you for allowing space for us to grow and allowing space for us to become the best version of ourselves. Thank you for your incredible flexibility with people's time and schedules. Thank you for always being straightforward but gentle. They have this thing called gentle parenting. That's I think what you do, which is great. I am not a gentle parent, but I have learned a lot from you as your clerk and I really appreciate your leadership. And I hope that we can continue to move forward as a board and continue to move forward with the community at the center. I'm complete.
Thank you.
I'm not complete. I lied. Those of you who next week, your teachers and your staff members and your aides and all the people that work to touch your children. The last day of school is Friday, the 15th, they get out at noon. Please do not give them mugs. They won't gift cards. They will smile at your mugs and your flowers and say thank you, but they won't gift cards. Please give your administration, your staff, your aides, your teachers, your traffic workers, all the people who help your children every single day, the parent volunteers. Please give them gift cards. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith-Holtz. For my comments, first, I want to touch a piece on what trustee Reckler mentioned about workforce housing. Dr. Hurst actually and I are meeting tomorrow with the Hilltop developers and council member Bana from the Richmond City Council to discuss the possibility of hopefully some of those units going to some of our staff. So obviously, it's a little different than developing workforce housing, but hopefully it'll put a it'll put us a little bit into that discussion, which we haven't been involved in. So we'll report back to the full board on how that goes and if there's space for us to hopefully be part of it. The thing with workforce housing development, which I've been part of in Santa Clara County, is that it takes money, which we don't have, right? So it's a difficult conversation to take on. By the way, Rose, are you there to start my timer? And I will talk the whole time, so. So so that's just one of the things that I really have been a proponent for for housing, but we're going to have to figure out our our funding sources if we really do want to be thoughtful about that. But we'll let you all know about our conversation tomorrow. I want to also just thank everybody, our community, obviously, our student staff. But I wanted to just give a shout out to our superintendent, our cabinet. As this is my last board meeting as the board president, I want to thank you all for that partnership of making this job so much easier because of your leadership. And I want to thank our clerk because she has been a partner in this work, an amazing leader, Clerk Smith-Holtz, and I look forward to your next step in this leadership work. And you have been just an amazing balance to my, what did you call it? Gentle parenting, because I can be too gentle. So I appreciate the balance that that we take. And board, I want to thank you all for allowing me this year to develop my leadership skills as well. And time flew, but I am also thankful that it's over as fast precedence for how I feel. But it's been it's been a journey and I'm thankful for what we were able to accomplish this this year through the difficult times. And that is it. Our next board meeting is next Wednesday, December 13th, where we're going to have a big agenda and we're going to have board and extended closed session. So just a heads up. And I will now adjourn us at 8:07 PM. Thank you, everyone.